First order of business is pledge allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I want to make one announcement, and that is that if you need to use the ladies' room or the gentlemen's room to ask me, I will make appropriate arrangements. We're having some work done on plumbing, so if you need to use the restroom, we'll go over to the seniors' center. Our building official said as long as you're within 500 feet of another lavatory, you could hold a meeting. But we're going to keep it, it's a short meeting tonight, I didn't want to cancel because I thought we could get a good presentation in tonight, you know, by the fact that we're studying the budget. So we're going to move right into approval of minutes from March 6, 2000. Moved by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jim Trent, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, the abstentions, motion carries. Acceptance of agenda, move.
So move.
So move, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Schar, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, the abstentions, motion carries. We have one item under communications and correspondence, and that's the town technology presentation, and I'll open it up to Mr. Pizmitzky and Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate everybody's patience. Kevin, obviously my assistant, we've been working on transforming and basically moving our existing website to a different content management software. We had been using .net Nuke. The learning curve on it was much steeper than the Wix format. We're transforming everything over to the Wix format. We're finding that all of our web customers, our hosting customers, are liking this a lot better. So basically, all of our websites that we host have been already migrated over to the Wix format. And we've been deliberating on when, the town site obviously is massive, okay? We created the site back in 2002, '04, something around there. It's been a long time, so. Our Town Tech program was the first, you know, we created the town website. So it's very deep, very massive, a lot of pages, so Kevin's done a yeoman's job coordinating. We've been working with our Town Tech students on getting things, and they're got, we tried doing it kind of in parallel, and it got to the point, there's so much work, we're updating the new site and trying to keep the old site up, so we kindly had to jump off the dock and get in the boat. And so that's where we are, unfortunately, a lot of the, there are some gaps as far as that goes. Kevin kind of put together a little bit of presentation, kind of a roadmap of where we are, how we got to where we are, where we came from. So without any further ado, Mr. Kevin Armstrong.
And we'll get this started here. Oh, okay, that's from over there. All right. So, does that sound kind of echoey?
Yes.
Is that all right? I'm coming, oh, I'm listening to myself talk. Okay, here we go. So I put together a quick little presentation, kind of running down where we came from, how we transitioned, where we're going. And we'll dive right in here. So for starters, as Dave mentioned, the website's gone through multiple iterations. It was originally manually coded in HTML. As we realized that that was becoming too labor-intensive to maintain calendars, forms, all of the niceties that you expect in a website nowadays, we then transferred the entire HTML site into the first content management system, which was .net Nuke. Still locally hosted, still done within the town hall, on the town hall servers. .net Nuke, as companies do, they like to change, they upgraded to a new software that we were forced to change to over time. PortlandCT.org was never fully upgraded to this stage, mainly because of the vastness of the site. It was a lot of extra work, so we kind of limped along and kept it half in one boat, half in the other. To try to eliminate that problem, as well as the problem of having to maintain the locally hosted scenario, we transferred over to Wix, which is a cloud platform.
If part of the problem, you know, with our hosted sites, when we started with coding in HTML, our hosted sites paid us to do all of the updates, okay? And we were charging, and that's how our Town Tech program basically got a lot of, most of its funding, as far as that goes. So people wanted to start doing more of their own updates, so they wouldn't have to pay us, that's why, one of the reasons why we went over to the .net Nuke platform, which was content management. There was still a learning curve. So they were, our hosted sites were doing their updates, and then they would get into trouble and screw things up, and then would have to call us up, okay? Hey, we lost the page, can you get it back? So hence, you know, we started exploring other options, and you know, Kevin did a lot of research, and the Wix format obviously is hosted in the cloud. So it's, so far it's been working out. Our customers that we host the sites to are, you know, having real good success in doing all of their own updates, and they're happy, so all those problems, done.
So the question then becomes, why cloud, why now? Why are we making this change? The web is constantly changing the rules for code, and the infrastructure needed to host and maintain websites is ever-changing, and to that note, getting more expensive. The list of requirements in order to maintain a secure website has vastly changed. Windows updates is a huge thing, security changes for maintaining the open web on the internal town hall servers, things called SSL, Secure Socket Layer Certificates, which give you that HTTPS when you go to visit a website, as opposed to HTTP with a bunch of warnings about how the site is non-secure. And that, that sounds simple, but we, in the transition, got multiple phone calls from folks before we made the transition, asking, is this site secure? I'm trying to pay my town taxes, I'm trying to pay my water bill, and it is a concern when people see that big red notification up at the top of Chrome or Firefox or Internet Explorer, and we want to avoid that. Mobile versus desktop is a huge hurdle, a huge problem, from our standpoint, trying to code it ourselves. You're talking about a majority of people now try to, or prefer to visit the web on their mobile phone or on their tablet. And if you are not maintaining the ability for that, you get those same questions, concerns, complaints about how they can't reach the information. And then, of course, code has changed. HTML, CSS, Java, what actually builds the site changes over time, and we have to keep up with that learning process in order to make sure that our sites continue to work. Maintaining all of these needs has become fairly cross-prohibitive to upkeep in-house. So the cost of doing business, the Town Tech program uses pay sites to offset the costs of maintaining our own websites. We currently have 14 pay sites that offset the cost while hosting four town sites. Those four town sites are the Town of Portland, PortlandCT.org, the Portland Library, Portland Library, CT.org, and then we also have a Town Tech and Water and People website for our classes that kind of piggyback off of the cost. And that means that it's imperative that the added workload to keeping all of this together doesn't result in more costs to the town. With new requirements for security and server infrastructure, it's become very difficult to keep that cost balance. Yes, sir?
14 pay sites.
Mm-hmm.
Are they like businesses?
Yeah.
Is this in town, or can it be anywhere?
Anywhere.
Can it be anywhere? We have Chat of Health, we host basically my music store site, we host the
Couple of civic organizations, yeah.
The Connecticut Water Works Association, so
The Fair.
The Fair site we host, okay, as far as that goes. So, you know, anybody, basically, we're now in talks now, we host the Brownstone Bottle Shop, we host their site, we host Clean Slate and Environmental down there, as far as that goes. So we're now
How do you charge, like a monthly fee?
Yeah, basically, our hosting fee for the standby, for the, basically $24.95 a month, okay, to host them, okay? And primarily, that site, that hosted charge is unlimited space, okay? Most hosted providers, they will charge you, you know, by the gig, you know, all of the stuff, you know, so that occurs, so the Wix format is, you know, we provide them unlimited space.
We also help these pay sites, they help build their site.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, they build, you know, depending on, we just had a reminder coming from East Hampton, okay, transfer over to us. We took their information and migrated it all over, okay, into the Wix format and so forth. We give them training and so forth, so when they basically inquire about hosting websites, we will look at it, number one, see how big the site is, what is it going to be entailed, and we put together a proposal, and you know, basically, they sign a proposal with us, and then we move it over, and we do all of the behind-the-scenes, we're changing the name servers, and so it's registered with, you know, the internet. For most of our websites are GoDaddy websites, we find that keeping all the eggs in the basket is a lot easier. When we first started, we had Network Solutions, we had GoDaddy, we had InfoSearch, you know, there was a whole mess of ISP providers that we used. Now we're kind of migrating everything over to GoDaddy. It's a lot easier to manage and keep track of.
So how does Board of Ed do?
We used to do their site, but they have since split off to be in the Google environment, because they've shifted towards the Google Classroom, and that, that puts them in a different platform than what we use.
Yeah, initially, when we first, they approached us, that the, the school site was a snipe in for one of the teachers, I guess, one of the teachers in Valley View used to hold, used to do the, and then, for whatever reason, that was taken away, and now I think Mike Tech does it, other than Ice Warp, okay? They don't use Wix, they use
They're using Google Sites.
They use Google Sites.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So what is needed? The laundry list that allows all of this to work has gotten longer over the years, so we need a server, the server license for that server, a SQL database license for that server. We need a DNS server in order to handle the traffic, and a server license to go with that. We need an advanced firewall that we replaced fairly recently, but it needs to be beefier than it normally would, because it has to manage both lines of traffic, so that we, as the town, our information is not on the open internet, but the websites are. We also have a hosted email server, Ice Warp, that provides email to most of the pay sites, there's a server license that goes along with that. There's the hosting software, the CMS, the .net Nuke, the Evoque. That's your hardware, that's your physical stuff at the town hall. The digital stuff is your domain registration per website, your SSL certificate per website, any editing software, we're fortunate enough to have grandfathered ourselves in, so that doesn't really cost us anything, because we own it outright. And then the usual staff hours, both ours and the high school classes' time to get all this to work. When we switch to Wix, we cut a lot of the fat out. So everything that you see up there in red, we no longer need to maintain separately, and all the stuff that's in green, we do still have to maintain in order to keep the services running. So a lot of the physical requirements are cut out by moving it to the cloud, and a lot of the minutia of small services, like the SSL certificates, those are built into the Wix platform, so we don't have to incur that additional cost. And that was one of the big driving forces towards making this switch.
And there are pros and cons of hosting in-house versus in the cloud, like anything else, there's pros and cons. You know, we were having issues with servers a while back last year, and servers were going up and down, and you know, when people were paying to host their website, and all of a sudden it's down for, you know, two hours or whatever, and they get upset, you know, so, you know, going through the, it's, you know, like I said, there's pros and cons. You know, you don't have as much control over the exterior and the cloud stuff as you would in-house, but by the same token, you don't have a lot of the responsibility and a lot of the liability.
Yeah, you gain limitations by going into the cloud, but it takes away a lot of the micromanagement tasks, maintaining these servers, ensuring that they're updated, up to code, and that they're on and running. We're not a web company, so we don't have the ability to double all of this, to have redundancy, so if it goes down, it goes down. There's only so many backup options with the way we handle things. So moving towards the costs, how does it all add up? And I, this is all very rough numbers, I didn't go invoice by invoice, but in general, if you were to do everything by the book, you would need to replace a lot of your physical infrastructure every seven years. Now realistically, we push that out to 10 to 12, because we're good like that, but realistically, from a web perspective, that window is getting smaller. They're trying to get you to not hold off, they want you to go to the next version of Windows, they want you to go to the next version of SQL, and they're making it ever more difficult to hold on to the old. And just as a breakdown, the total cost of all of that that's on the left would come out to roughly, if you were to break it down by those seven-year increments, it would be about $7,500 a year. Billing those 14 websites at $24.95 a month, we're pulling in $4,200 a year. Now, mind you, we didn't have all of these costs 10, 12 years ago, those have increased over time in complexity. We didn't always need to have a SQL license, because we didn't always have databases behind the website, so it's kind of added up over time.
When we first started, we had, when we first started, we had probably well over 25, close to 30 websites, and then as we started having problems with servers, you know, people get unhappy, and they moved, so as far as that goes, so.
So, that being said, the Wix solution is considerably cheaper, and that's just our costs for hosting versus what we bill. Registration is nominal. We do still host the email internally, which costs money, but that's because we're currently rolling that email cost into that monthly cost. We could technically go up on that, but by the same token, with all of this changing and shifting landscapes, we're trying to maintain the customers and not tick anybody off too much, to keep the inconvenience at a low. And email is a big part of any small business, and to start shaking that up on people, we didn't want to rock that boat. So it comes out to $5,800 roughly a year, still billing that $4,200. So it's a reasonable cost savings from what we were doing to what we are going to be doing, or what we're actually doing now. We still have a little ways to go to try to rein that in, and keep in mind that if we did not have the pay sites, we would be brunting the full cost, so we would get nothing back. So even though it doesn't even out, we're not making money on the venture, we're hashing against what it would cost us to do if we were to just host the Portland, Town of Portland website versus bringing in the pay sites to offset that cost.
Plus, we're using this as a teaching tool, you know,
Yeah.
context of, so if the students are getting experience, if working with that and working with HTML, with, one of the things that we have, we deal with, with all of our clients, we involve all of the students all of the time. So when we meet with the client, the students are there, they get to see, you know, what it is to meet with the client, what their expectations, and they also get a kind of the realize, okay, of producing and deliverable, and producing in a practical fashion, okay? So that in itself is, you know, part of the curriculum, and we now, if you get a chance to come up to our new Town Tech suite, which is basically in, down in the Mayhaw Valley, it used to be, back in the day, it used to be Pisa, but we now have a three-room suite that we have our new podcast studio in, we also have a mini photo studio, and we have our own network up there, so we pushed the town hall network up on the, about the fiber, so we have nine work sessions, Kevin.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, so we have our own kind of entrepreneurial, this is what we call it, anybody who speaks. So we have, I got, we hosted the chamber meeting up there last month, okay, and we took all of the chamber members down for a tour of the suite, in fact, one of them, one of the chamber members, Walt Jazinik, who's a photographer in East Hampton, and he says, geez, this is great, he says, if you'd like me to, you know, to come in and, you know, talk to the students about portraits and so forth, and so he came up today during our rendezvous, and talked to the kids how to set up portraits, how to do, you know, a lot of the magic tricks, which is Photoshop and so forth, so he got them a real, real-life, you know, explanation of how to utilize the software that we have, so.
Oh, and that's where the podcast studio is?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, did you mention that?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to
That's one of the newer, one of the newer things, that's, you know, websites, a lot of, a lot of the websites use blogs, the blogs are slowly kind of getting, migrating to podcasts, because, believe it or not, 80% of the video or any of the web content, okay, 80% of that content is viewed on this, okay, not on the desktop computer. So that's one of the things Kevin talked about, is having mobile and what we call responsive website, is that you have, when you call it up on your computer here or here, okay, it automatically references it and changes it, so you can view it on the tablet. When we first started doing websites, we used to have to do two versions, a mobile version here, and the desktop version here. Now, all of the software, and that's where all of the content management software has made everything responsive, so whatever you do here, automatically transgresses here.
Right.
It works out, and being responsive, that's the buzzword.
And the battery's running low, so we got to move along. So more effort is needed, but we're making progress. So the town website isn't going away anytime soon. It's like anything else, people expect that information to be available on the web, and we need to continue to plan for the future to ensure that we're providing the public with an adequate amount of information via the internet, while at the same time managing the costs associated with that service. And any way that we can make that happen, and also make it more manageable for us, is in my book, a win-win. Any questions?
As far as the fire wall goes?
Yes.
How are we doing to prevent hacking for our viruses?
So
I think years ago, we had a major
We had a major issue, yes, and we have a new unit, both here and a sister unit over at the police station, so they're actually in their own environment, completely separate, because that's sensitive information, so we wanted to have an extra layer there. But at least the unit that is in the town hall, it's a Cisco ASA, I can't remember the number, 5200.
It's what they call a layer seven unit, which is basically, the security level is much more heightened, okay? We can do encryption on it, we can act it, so which is good.
We paid extra for the next unit up, which allows for three separate channels, so CEN, Comcast, and a Verizon T1 line. And using those three independent connections through the firewall, you create those completely separate channels of information. So anything that pertains to the websites and the web email has literally no connection other than at that firewall, to any of the internal server information, any of the finance information, all of that is separated by that controlling box. Because we have that environment, though, we had to go up a level. As we go into the future, if it's in the cloud and not here, we don't have to maintain that quite as robustly.
And the thing is, with that type of technology, from the standpoint of, as Kevin said, we have three internet providers, okay, I'm a firm believer in Belton Suspectors, so we have our old T1 line, okay, which is a dedicated circuit, okay, it's old and it's antiquated, we're going to be upgrading that, but we also have a Comcast line, okay, and the problem is with Comcast line, it's faster, it's safe, but when they lose power, Comcast is down, okay? CEN, which is the Connecticut Education Network, okay, that is, they, we, also a provider here in the library, and all the educational institutions. The nice part about that ASA, okay, with that redundancy, okay, if one of those goes down, okay, it will automatically switch over to the redundant provider. The schools went down two weeks ago, okay, they were down for four hours. We never went down, because our CEN connection went down, but the ASA flipped us over onto the Comcast and the T1 connection.
You're welcome.
How much revenue do we bring in when people pay their taxes on my end, or is that a wash?
That, I don't
I'm not sure.
Because that would be part of this equation.
Yeah, but there's a fee associated, as you know, then, I don't know if we do make a, plus, it's not very much, the cost associated with making that.
There is, there is a convenience fee, okay, that
Right, which is pushed off.
No, 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 I get all that, but I didn't know if the town got anything out of that. For example, you know, if it's $3 per transaction, they get two, we get one. I'm just curious, because we are hosting a website that makes
We do, in terms of, in the town clerk's office, in fact, he mentioned at our staff meeting today, that review only of deeds is not going to be available anymore, because he felt that some of the for-profit title searchers were inappropriately, perhaps, not downloading and copying and paying the appropriate fee, so he wants to make certain that those fees are collected by the town.
Yep.
So Brian has a good handle on that, and that is a revenue generation for the work that's done. It's not that we're making money on these things, but there is a cost associated with it, and for people, the convenience fee of not having to come in, first.
To my point, the website has a value and a cost.
Oop, there goes.
Well, that, the website is
Bye, bye, presentation.
Hosting of that, that's a third-party website, okay? What is it, Pay, what's that?
Point and Pay.
I know, but back to my point, without our website, you can't get to the third-party website. My point is, obviously, there's a value to the taxpayers, for us to have our website, so that, so what I'm getting at is, maybe the fee needs to be a dollar more, or something that the town gets to keep, because there is a value to you guys keeping this
There's also that education component that I, you know, you may be aware of it, because you went to Portland High School, but the Town Tech program itself is designed such that the revenue that it generates gets funneled back into the program, and there's a committee made up of myself, and Tom, and Dr. O'Reilly, and Dave, and sort of the teaching staff at the high school, and we review a couple times a year, three, four times a year, the need that the Town Tech program has to buy their camera equipment, their projectors, or whatever other types of equipment. So it's an educational program that, there's a benefit to the town, because the students assist us with the website and other ways, but
Well, the video camera that, you know, is filming this, okay, that was bought with the contact lens, okay?
Right.
We have another one, okay? We have lighting equipment where we go out and do videos, okay, as far as that goes. And we have our booth that we have, that we bring over and display our websites over at the Chamber Expo. We do the ACTA, which is the Connecticut Water Works Conference, so we go out and do that. So we purchased, we purchased 12 cameras now, four years ago, we have our streaming equipment that we go out and stream, where we stream the graduation, that was our equipment, I mean, we streamed the coral extravaganza, okay, that was our equipment that we used, okay? So, which costs money, I mean, that camera back there that we're using to film tonight, that's a $5,000 camera. that's a five-thousand-dollar camera, okay? So, you know, it, it's the old VCRs with the, with the tapes.
Right.
That's not part of the budget, part of the general fund. It's, it's sequestered, it's separate, but it's a great educational tool for our students. And it's a benefit to the town because the students are helping their community by doing a lot of this work. So, I think it's important to also point out that if you want to have your website, get in touch with Dave or Kevin, um, and certainly they'll be happy to host it. It goes to Google.
Yeah, and one of the other things that we, we, we purchased a GPS, uh, equipment, a Tremblex, our, um, I don't know, now it's a seven-thousand, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we, we basically use that, uh, GPS equipment to GPS all of our critical infrastructure, our fire hydrants, our manholes, our valves, our hatch bases, okay? That, that unit, they're alone, seven-thousand dollars. So, the money that we generate, it goes into what we call our AD4 fund, which is our, uh, our, our Town Tech. Plus, we also do a, a Town Tech Educational Scholarship, our JCPenney Scholarship, um, that we have the, uh, the fourth hole at the Exchange Club, um, a belt turner. And then basically, whatever money we collect out on the whole, okay, the Exchange Club manages. So, uh, we, uh, I think this is probably the sixth or seventh year that we've gotten given out a fifteen-hundred-dollar scholarship to high school students.
Any other questions for the Technology team?
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, nice job, good presentation.
So, did your battery-
It died.
Oh, okay, all right. So, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of where, um-
I unplugged it.
That, that's kind of where we are. We're migrating, like I said, we've got, uh, students that are working on it. I, I also am on the Steering Committee, the Technology Committee for, uh, Middlesex Community College and, uh, Gateway College in New Haven. Uh, I sit on the Advisory Board and I have a, a relationship with Professor Hilton over at, uh, Middlesex. And we typically will use, uh, one, maybe two interns from their computer science program that comes over and, uh, they have to do a hundred and fifty hours. So, they, uh, they come over and work with us on a variety of things, everything, great things, to do web updates, to, you know, uh, you know, fix the computers, so. Uh, that, that has been a very fruitful relationship and, um, it, it works out very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Thank you.
Move on.
Oh, thanks, Norm.
Rhielsa? Paul Mataman? Next is whole business, appointments to board and commissions. I had one that, um, we realized we needed to reappoint Ms. Dawn Wadding, W-A-D-N-G-I-N-G, to the Portland Housing Authority.
Dawn Wadding to the Portland Housing Authority? Is there a second to that nomination?
Okay.
Ben? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, any opposed and abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, there is no new business. Are there any status of committee reports tonight? Uh, public comment?
I might have, Norm.
Yes.
The other night I went to the, uh-
Here, Norm, you want to come up?
Now, right over to the, uh, just, come right over to the podium here.
Norm Ward, Chairperson of Portland Conservation. The other night, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting of the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee. Um, I happened to be, be in there just on my own. And then Planting and Zoning was there, Sue was there, the committee. It was a, what I got out of it was a great interaction with some of our commissions in town. I think it opens our dialogue together. Um, we get to see one another at the same meeting, and I really think that helps us tremendous. It seemed that the other night, I'd like to see more of it to this, how we get things done by recognizing one another and working together. And that's what I saw out in this new subcommittee. And I think it's a great, great committee. It looks like we're really going to move forward and it's great for our plan of development and conservation. Um, what I got out of it, they're going to keep an eye out to make sure our activities we should be working on, what are we doing? Are we, is it on the back burner and the front burner? Are we making progress? So, it kind of keeps us all on our toes a little bit and it keeps us recognized as what we should be working on. So, I think it's a great asset, that committee moving into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Uh, informal discussion, selection. Okay, uh, I don't have anything on follow-up, so I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Is there a second? Jim's seconded, all in favor? I, I opposed, motion carries. Thank you.